...our council meeting of March 14th, 2016. At 7:42 PM, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can we begin with a roll call?
Mayor Protem Bliss.
Here.
Councilman Clark.
Here.
Councilman Corbett.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
Mayor Hartwell.
Yes, I'm here. We'll begin with an invocation by Councilman Clark, so if you could please rise and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, help us to remember that we are here to serve and not be served. Remind us daily of the many who need to be helped. Guide us to be there for others and assist them in times of need. Amen.
Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We don't have any presentations tonight, so we'll go to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
Nothing from staff here.
Okay, great hearing none. We'll move on to business license initial under item A in the agenda. We have many applicants. What's the wish of council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark.
I'd make a motion to approve the business license initial, subject to compliance with all departmental and ordinance requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is that for all eight listed in the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? The motion is to approve all business licenses initial, numbers one through eight, subject to any departmental rules. Motion by Mr. Clark, seconded by Mr. Corbett. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Tonight, we don't have any business licenses for temporary, seasonal, or non-commercial. So continuing, item B, public hearings. There are none tonight. So next, I'll ask, is there anything on tonight's agenda that someone wants to be brought forward at this time? If not, I'd go to the meeting open to the public, and first, I'd like to introduce our Oakland County Treasurer, Andy Meisner. And then after Mr. Meisner, the meeting will still be open to the public. Hello, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Mayor Protem, distinguished members of the council and municipal staff. It is a pleasure to see some dear friends this evening. I'm Andy Meisner, the Oakland County Treasurer, and very honored to partner with the great city of Madison Heights on a number of issues. And I wanted to come tonight for a very specific purpose, and that was to urge the mayor and members of the council to join me in reaching out to our citizens in Madison Heights to know that March 31st, just a few short weeks from now, is the deadline for property tax foreclosure. So if by some chance, family has fallen behind on property taxes, and they have delinquent taxes going back to 2013 or prior, this March 31st, they could lose their entire interest in that property. Say that again, they could lose that entire interest in that property. Now, no matter where you are, you know, ideologically, you know that property rights are really important, and that for somebody to lose their property is a very serious exercise of government. And so, we want to do everything that we can to avoid this. And the mayor and the council have been great friends in the past in getting the word out and, you know, letting citizens know that, you know, right now, we have about 7,800 payment plans around the county. So our staff is more than happy to try to work with taxpayers to get a payment plan going, or to get them their taxes resolved, but it's going to take a little bit of partnership. And it's also going to take getting connected with your county treasurer before March 31st of this year. Now, Laura Schmidt is my chief of property tax administration, who I think is, if I'm not mistaken, has got some kin to Councilwoman Scott. She lives in Madison Heights, and I want to tell you, she is a great credit to this wonderful city. Laura Schmidt is somebody who's working really hard, and I'm telling you, as a citizen, you guys should be really proud of. She quarterbacks our strategy for property tax administration, and so, we're meeting feverishly with taxpayers. So the most important thing that I wanted to bring with you, to you this evening, Mr. Mayor and council, is March 31st deadline. Please contact your county treasurer. My cellphone is 421andy. It's 248-421andy. You can contact me directly. I'm still on a BlackBerry, if you can believe it or not. They still make these things. Our office number is 248-858-0611. That's 248-858-0611. And our web address is oakgov.com. That's oakgov.com/treasurer. So we've got, I guess it's just really a couple weeks at this point, and so, if it's a friend, if it's a family member, if it's somebody from church, or your place of worship, and you're concerned that they might be having a difficult time financially, go ahead and reach out to them and get them connected with us. If there's any way to do it, we'll take care of them. I've got some brochures that I brought that go through the property tax timeline, and of course, if the property taxes are not made payable to City of Madison Heights, they get turned over to the treasurer's office, and over the course of the next 28 months, there's interest and fees that are added, and then all sorts of efforts that are made into connecting with the taxpayer. So anybody that's willing to at least get on a payment plan, there's no reason that you should lose your property, but the law is clear that after March 31st, even if they show up with all the money, we can't accept it. So I hope you can understand why I take this as such a serious sort of a thing, and why I'm seeking your partnership on it. We've also got something at my office called the Financial Empowerment Center. If somebody's fallen behind on their taxes, you know, maybe they were unemployed or underemployed, but, you know, maybe they're having a little tough time getting their finances in order. Well, we have some financial counselors who, for free, can work with families to build a family budget, to repair their credit score, so that if they do need to borrow for a car or college, they can do so at a lower rate. And this is all free. Some of these people advertising this or whatnot, they shouldn't pay for what they can get for free from us, and so, once we get them, we can assist them with that. Now, the last thing I would mention is that Madison Heights has been a place that has really embraced small business, and, you know, the county has got some resources that are available to help small businesses, and a lot of times, a small business can be a path out of poverty. Somebody has an idea, and they build a business, and, you know, next thing you know, you've got a Garden Fresh Salsa, or, you know, one of these big companies, and you're employing 300 people. That could be within the citizens of Madison Heights right now, and so, that's why the last thing that I wanted to mention is the Oakland County Business Finance Corporation. Let's say that you've got that idea about starting a business, and, you know, maybe, you know, you've got a business plan that's put together, or you need a little help with that. Well, the Oakland County Business Finance Corporation can not only help you get your business plan in order, but it can help you get a business loan that's supported by the SBA, or the Small Business Administration, and with seven out of 10 new jobs coming in small business, this is a resource that we really want to tap. I serve on the executive committee of the Business Finance Corporation, and I don't know if anyone has ever seen Shark Tank, but this program on television where these businesses go up, the business loan review committee is just like Shark Tank, because these folks are kind of identifying every strength, but also every weakness, so that people can go into, you know, the competitive world in a way that is built for success. So I know you have a long meeting, and I wanted to be sensitive to time. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you. I'd be happy to entertain any questions about, if you remember anything, just remember March 31st, and get them to the treasurer beforehand, but anything about that, or the Financial Empowerment Center, or small business lending, and our BFC, I'd be happy to entertain those questions, or allow you to get on with your evening.
Thank you, Mr. Meisner. I speak for myself, but I appreciate that you're here. It's great to see our county officials involved in Madison Heights, and you always have done a great job with respecting what we're doing, and so, you know, that'll be reciprocal. We will help you communicate this deadline, and I think maybe the city manager is recommending that we'll put a link to your website, onto the city's website.
That would be great.
And if you could leave a copy of that brochure.
Sure.
One of us will personally run copies and make them available to the public, put a couple out in the lobby of City Hall.
Great.
But thanks for addressing these really interesting programs, and thanks for spearheading some good ideas.
Well, it's a pleasure, and, you know, I appreciate your leadership, Mayor. You know, of course, we go back to University of Detroit Law School, and when I first met you, you were fighting to make sure that all the veterans got access to legal services, and that was something I really appreciated, and appreciate the leadership you're bringing to the great city of Madison Heights. County's looking for great things from this place, and we really appreciate it, and so, thank you, and thank you for those kind words.
Good night, Mr. Meisner. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to address city council? The meeting's open to the public. Margene Scott, did you want to introduce some of your guests tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Andy, and I would also like to mention that Andy's mother is the mayor of Oak Park.
That's right.
So instead of having like father like son, we have like son like mother. Yeah, she does very good at her job, as do you. We thank you for all your understanding with people who are having financial difficulty. Thank you. Tonight, I'm very delighted because I had a group of wonderful citizens visit our heritage rooms earlier today, and they are the den from Simons Elementary School here in Madison Heights. They are PAC number 1591, and if you want, they celebrated their 30th anniversary, and I know this because my son, who was 45 years old, 46, just turned 46, was a member of 1591, and I was a den mother. In those days, we had den mothers. So I want to thank you for carrying on that tradition. I want to thank the parents and the leaders who really spend a lot of time on organizing the meetings, and making sure that the boys are meeting their badge requirements, and making sure they're learning, but I found that of all the dens that I had, the ones who are always excelling in school and do well in school started out as scouts. They learn morals, they learn how to treat people, they learn how to respect people. So I would like to thank all of you for coming today and giving us your time. I hope you learned something in the museum, and I want to again thank your leaders and your parents for all the help they give you. Thank you very much, and I hope you'll all come back soon. I enjoyed having you. You are very interesting. I think, did they want to ask any questions?
Please come up to the microphone. Try to pull the microphone down.
Just rock, paper, scissors.
Yeah, take the microphone and bend it down, honey.
There we go. Oh, best of three. Before they get the best of five. Yeah, exactly. Best of 20.
Hi, guys. Would you like to say your name?
I'm a bear scout in PAC 1591.
Thank you. Good job.
How is the freeway expansion going to affect our city?
There's an easy one, Mayor.
This actually affects his house personal.
Oh.
The question was, how does the freeway expansion affect the city? That's a really complex question. First of all, it'll affect us financially. The city has to pay a portion of the cost. It'll also affect us because it'll, there will be a public taking of private land. The city will not take private land, but bigger governments possibly will take private land. And also, it'll affect us regionally, and more based on policy, that as a region, we will spend $1 billion, making it easier for people to travel up north and skip our town. And it'll just impact us with dust and dirt and trucks everywhere for 25 years.
And a lot more traffic on the other streets while it's under construction.
And there's still questions whether we'll be able to maintain all of the bridges and pedestrian overpasses, but that's a really good question, very difficult, very difficult to answer, but we'll keep looking for answers. Thank you for asking. Anyone else? Hi, what's your name, please?
Giorgio Ermoni. And I am a bear cub of PAC 1591, and my question is, do you make laws?
Yes. The city makes laws. The city exists as a subdivision of the state government. So we are only allowed to do what the state allows us to do. All right? Is that what it's called?
Yes.
And so, we don't necessarily call them laws, we call them ordinances. Everything from "don't jaywalk" to "the park is closed at dusk," those are city ordinances, and they're laws. So good question. Anyone else have an answer? I feel like this is, I don't know, an interrogation.
My name is Tyler London. I'm a bear cub in PAC 1591, and how do you make the world a better place?
Oh my gosh, that's a really good question.
Is the national debt coming up next?
We make the world a better place by giving you what you want and making a city that you are going to want to live in. So really, the answer is up to you, what do you want us to do? But does anyone else in council want to answer that?
Your Honor.
Mayor Protem Bliss.
Happy to jump in. So I went to Simons, okay? So I sat in your chairs, I was in the same PAC, and part of what our job is, is to inspire leaders of the next generation. And so, you, sitting here in these seats and asking these really, really easy questions, hopefully our answers.
You didn't have to answer them.
Yeah, exactly. Hopefully, our answers to these questions and your presence here makes you comfortable and excited about local government, and so, 20 years from now, you might be sitting up here making decisions just like I am. And, you know, our mayor went to our schools, too. We graduated, we played in the same streets that you're playing in, went to the same schools, and we saw the same things you did growing up, and hopefully, hopefully, you're going to keep paying attention, and the way that we make the world a better place is when you're sitting in this chair, continuing and growing upon the things that we've done.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Bliss. Any other comments from council directed towards our scouts?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I would like to say that you are already making the world a better place because you are involved in Cub Scouts, and I hope you continue to stay in Scouts, and you will learn that you don't have to be satisfied with things. Just because something is a certain way and you don't like it, if you handle it right, you have the power to change things, or to help other people change things with you. So always remember that. You have a lot of power, and as you get older, you will find out. You'll go off to work, you'll graduate, and always remember the lessons that scout program has taught you. But thank you very much. That's wonderful to have you here.
Thank you, Councilwoman Scott, and thank you for joining us. You're always welcome back. The meeting's still open to the public, so if anyone would like to address council, please.
I would also like to ask a question. My name is Mark Hunnens. I live at 27119 Vance Street here in Madison Heights. I am the bear den leader. It's been a privilege with these boys because they ask these great questions, but we actually had a occurrence earlier this year where we needed a place to teach the boys to pitch a tent and have a campfire. Not all parents are able or willing to go to a campground. Our ordinance here in Madison Heights says we are not allowed to have a burn pit. Is there anything being proceeded forward as far as that being allowed yet for our residents?
Good question. We update our fire code periodically. I don't know what the current fire code is.
Your Honor, yes, actually, the fire chief and fire marshal's staff are working on a code update as we speak, so that's a very timely question, including the burning ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council? Please come up. It's your choice, but I ask that you voluntarily give your name and address, and if you could limit your comments to about three minutes.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi, I'm Gloria Moore. I live at 27368 Dartmouth. I would wish everyone a happy Pi Day, and if I don't see you, happy St. Patrick's Day, and also happy Easter. And I'd like to invite everyone to come to our March 3 Tuesday meeting. That's Tuesday. It's at 7:00 PM over at Wilkinson, and the snacks and beverages are on us. Also, I'd like to invite you to come to our membership rally on April 14th at 6:30. That's on a Thursday, and we're going to be having a lot of fun and a lot of interesting things happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council? Please come to the podium. Okay, thank you. We'll continue on the agenda. Item C is communications, number one, from Gospel Life Church, a request for Civic Center Park fee waiver.
Yes, Your Honor. Gospel Life Church, along with a coalition of churches in Madison Heights, is scheduled to use Civic Center Park and Pavilions A and B for an Easter egg hunt on Saturday, March 26th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Staff and I recommend approval of the request contingent upon compliance with the council policy on uniform insurance requirements for special events, and the group has requested a waiver of the pavilion rental and damage deposit fees.
Thank you. What is the wish of city council?
Your Honor.
Mr. Corbett.
Sir, I move that the council grant the request from the Gospel Life Church for the use of the pavilion facility, and there was a waiver request. Didn't I hear that?
Yes.
Waiver. Yes, and I would grant that, subject to approval of the departments.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Geddings.
A second, please.
Any discussion?
Motion by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Geddings, to approve, or excuse me, to grant the request, grant the fee waiver, and all this is subject to our insurance policy.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item, item D1, reports from the city clerk and DPS director, an update to city council's uniform insurance requirements for special events.
In November, the city's risk manager, Keith Potter, who's here tonight, requested that the city review and update the council's policy on uniform insurance requirements for special events based on the following reasons. First, over the years, language changes have occurred within the insurance industry. Second, insurance market changes can render our requirements difficult to secure for some of our community service organizations. And third, there can be and have been legal changes which necessitate a change in our requirements, and Public Act 271, which became effective July of 2014, is one such change. Our risk manager has been aware of PA 271 since it was adopted by the state and has worked with it while observing how it was being implemented. In order to comply with PA 271, along with the previously stated reasons, Mr. Potter has requested that the city's policy be revised, as indicated in the staff report to council. Staff has advised that the proposed update should not affect the special events approval process, as the changes are not expected to place additional burdens on the applicants, increase additional costs, or extend the application timeline for compliance. And I would note that the city attorney's office has reviewed and approved the policy revisions and sample documents. Staff and I recommend that city council adopt a revised council policy on uniform insurance requirements for special events.
Thank you. Well done. What is the wish of city council?
Your Honor.
Mayor Protem Bliss.
I move that we adopt the revised council policy on uniform insurance requirements for special events.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott.
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion on this item? Thank you. All in, oh, see, a motion by Mayor Protem Bliss, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to adopt a revised council policy on uniform insurance requirements for special events. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion is adopted. Continuing on the agenda to F1, bid awards and purchases. Good night, Scouts, thanks for coming. F1, under the agenda, it's an item from the police chief regarding towing services.
Yes, Your Honor. The towing contract between the city and service towing officially expired on January 23rd, 2016. The city and service towing have agreed to a contract extension for two months until a new contract could be agreed to by both parties. A committee comprised of the city manager, deputy city manager, DPS director, chief of police, and legal counsel met and discussed the advantages and disadvantages of entering into a new contract with service towing, or having the services go out to bid. It was unanimous that the city would benefit the most from entering into a new contract with service towing. Staff have researched the fees currently being charged by service towing and compared these fees with those charged by other towing companies in Royal Oak, Berkeley, Claussen, Troy, Michigan State Police, Hazel Park, and Warren, and the fees charged by service towing are comparable with those communities listed. Service towing has been the towing service for the city for over 20 years, and has been an extremely reliable, trustworthy, and efficient provider. The police department has a strong working relationship with service towing, and the owners readily work with the department in all towing-related matters. Staff has noted that service towing arrives on all police runs quickly, thoroughly cleans up the roadway of all accident debris, and always goes the extra mile to provide outstanding service at fair price. Service towing has agreed to extend the current towing fees for a new contract, and has also agreed to a rent increase of $250 per month in years six through 10 of the new contract. It should also be noted that under the previous contract, service towing constructed the building at the city's impound lot on Ajax Drive at their cost of over $90,000. Staff and I recommend that a new 10-year contract be entered into with service towing in order for the city to maintain its high standards of service to the community, and I would note that the proposed agreement has been approved by the city attorney's office.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark, please.
I'd make a motion to approve a new 10-year contract be entered into with service towing in order for the city to maintain its high standards of service to the community.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott.
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion? See, a motion by Councilman Clark, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to approve a 10-year contract with service towing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you. We'll move on to item F2, under the agenda, a bid award slash purchase from the purchasing coordinator regarding CDBG funds.
Yes, Your Honor. On March 1st, 2016, six bids were opened for community development block grant-funded lawn service. One bid was administratively rejected for not having provided any references, and another was rejected for having unsatisfactory references. Staff and I recommend that council award the contract for home chore mowing and lawn maintenance to the lowest responsible bidder, Maxwell Lawn Care, at a unit price of $12.95 per lot, and to authorize the city to proceed to the next lowest responsible bidder, Grashit Landscaping, which is our current vendor, at $18 per lot, should the contract with Maxwell Lawn Care be canceled due to non-performance or other issues. And I would note that the budgeted amount is not to exceed $15,000 per CDBG program year.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. What's the wish of city council?
Your Honor.
Mr. Corbett.
Sir, I move that the council approve the recommendation and award the lawn cutting contract to home chore mowing and lawn contract to home chore mowing and lawn maintenance, the lowest responsible bidder, at a unit cost of $12.95 per lot, and also authorize the administration as a reserve in the case of the forfeiture and nonperformance of the first awardee, to grant permission to then move to Grashit Landscaping at a unit cost of $18 per lot, total not to exceed $15,000 per year on the CDBG budget.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clark?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? All right, there's a motion from Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Clark, to approve the staff recommendation, number one. And two, to authorize the city administration to proceed to the next lowest responsible bidder, should the contract with the original applicant be canceled. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you. Finishes that. We'll move on to item G. There's nothing tonight. Move on to item H. There's nothing tonight. So that leaves us with the minutes of the meeting of February 22, 2016. What's the wish of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move the council approve the meeting minutes from, one moment, sir. I lost it. February 22, 2016, as printed and presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you very much.
Your honor?
Discussion, please.
I would just say a question. We had a lot of answers from DTE, and they had a presentation. Those were not included in the minutes, some of the specific answers that they gave us. I'm wondering, just as a collective question, should they be, is it because it's available on a different source? I just want to make sure that if somebody is pulling the details of that meeting, that they're able to get some of the answers that DTE gave us without having to watch the entire YouTube video of it.
That's a good question. I mean, generally speaking, our minutes just reflect what we did, not necessarily what we said. But yeah, we historically kind of, we do fill in the context a little more.
Because, your honor, it lists a lot of questions that we asked that they're going to report back to us. But our minutes currently don't denote the answers that we got to questions that we posed live during the night. So just a question, I guess, is because we're reporting the questions that they're going to report back to us, should we perhaps also add the questions and then answers that we received to those questions while they were here?
Okay, maybe. I mean, this was like an hour-long hearing. So a verbatim transcript, I think, would be two burdensome.
Yeah, that's too-
Perhaps, like always, we can trust staff to provide us a fair synopsis-
Yeah.
-of the key objectives. I mean, clearly, it's not verbatim transcript, but-
I would agree with that. I mean, maybe just here are some of the answers that they gave to some of the direct questions that were asked. We don't have to have a huge, you know, multi-barrier.
Your honor, could I suggest that maybe that be done as a separate report?
That's fine. Good idea. Let's make it a separate report.
Doesn't hold up to-
Yeah, and we could even put the YouTube link on it. I just want to make sure that if a resident is trying to figure out what was discussed, and they pulled the minutes, they'll be able to have some answers.
That's a, it's a great concept. So any further discussion on adopting the minutes as printed? We can do a report on DTE for something separate for another day. But any more discussion on adopting the minutes as printed?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Sherman?
Just one minor comment, and that is that I was in attendance at the meeting rather than Assistant City Attorney Sherman. So I'd ask that they be amended accordingly.
Thank you. Mr. Corbett?
Do you agree? I agree.
To that slight amendment? Mrs. Scott, do you agree to that amendment?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor of adopting the minutes as amended, as recommended to be amended by Mr. Sherman, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you. Let's see, appointments tonight. Are there any appointments to boards and commissions? Any nominations from city council? There are no mayor's appointments, so unless there's any more from council. We have a lot of vacancies. Two alternate vacancies on crime commission. Brownfield Root Development Authority has a vacancy. Vacancies all over. So go online. There's a link, madisonhighs.com, you go on the left, it says get involved. Click the link, boards and commissions. Or any way you contact the clerk. Clerk always has information on applying to a board and commission. All right. We had an executive session earlier today, which was adjourned here, but we will not resume that executive session. So before we adjourn, I invite the city council to offer any closing comments. I'd like to begin with Mr. Corbett.
Just a couple of very quick items. First, I wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day coming up this week. Our colleague, Councilman Soltis, is already prepared for the day, looking all dapper and green there. And just a reminder, St. Patrick's Day or not, we'll be at the library on Friday again between 1:00 and 3:00. If anybody'd like to stop by and discuss city issue, no appointment required. Just come on in, say hi. Tough things we've decided we're going to send to Mr. Bliss from now on. So that's all, sir. Thank you.
Good. Mayor Protem Bliss?
Yes, your honor. So I'm really excited to finally announce the full details of our mock council student internship program. If you are a student at any of our Madison Heights high schools and you're a resident of the city of Madison Heights, you are eligible to serve as an intern and actually participate in a live mock meeting of city council. In order to be eligible, you're going to have to commit or complete an official entry form. That is going to include an original essay, no more than 300 words, with the theme, how local government impacts my life. If you're in, you know, a government class in the local schools, all that information's already been disseminated. But if anybody watching has a child or knows of somebody that would be a great fit for this program, please pass along the information. It'll be available on the website. Make sure that they complete those essays and the forms to be submitted by 4:30 PM on Thursday, March 24. Those essays will be judged, and then participants will be notified by April 11. And then on the 25th is when that first council meeting in attendance and then an afterglow reception is going to take place. And so they'll have about a month or so that they're in that mock council capacity. And on May 9, that's the big show, where they are going to give a mock council meeting live for all to see. We're going to record it. It's going to be put on the cable channel. We're going to stream it live on the city website. So definitely encourage everybody to participate. A long time ago, I participated in a similar program, and it was extremely beneficial. And so I hope that the students in our high schools, as we talked earlier with the Boy Scout troop, that it's about inspiring the leaders of tomorrow. I can't wait to see the leaders of tomorrow sitting in these chairs, discussing the issues that we discuss. It's going to be a lot of fun. And I hope everybody tunes in and comes out to support our students. That's it, your honor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Gettings?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman?
Your honor, I think we mentioned it, but the Cub Scouts were here because they took a tour of the Heritage Room. I think Councilwoman Scott mentioned it. But I have to compliment council on answering some very tough questions posed by the Cub Scouts. I thought they did an excellent job asking the questions, and I thought the council did an excellent job answering the tough questions. So that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Prince?
I just want to thank the election workers and the student workers that came out to help on the March 8 presidential primary election. They did an outstanding job. They worked a long, difficult day, and their services really appreciated, and their performance was outstanding. And I really could not have conducted an election without them. So thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
A couple of things, Mr. Mayor. Keep in mind, July 16, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, the Madison Heights Police Department is having another bike rodeo. And they will supply, what I hear, helmets for the kids that don't have them. April 16 is a Run for Health. That's a 5K program. It starts at 8:00 AM, and it'll start at the Nature Center. Now, there's a business that opened up on 11 Mile called Garage Muscle. A lot of this is geared toward younger kids, anywhere from, I think, about 10 years old. It not only shows them what to do to be healthier, what to eat, and show them proper way of exercising, maybe lift some weights. I will have more on that the next council meeting. Also coming up, October 7 of this year, is the manufacturers are opening their doors to our future workforce. They can go in to a lot of these factories. There's probably 20 or 30 of them listed here, on what they make and how they make it. Automobile parts, electrical parts, parts for the hospitals. It would be very interesting for kids that haven't really decided what they want to do for the rest of their life. At least they get a little education in the manufacturing area. And I believe that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Scott?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank again the students that were here tonight. There were two important questions. I asked them, because we had a prohibition sign in the 1930s area. And I asked them what prohibition was. And I said, and then when can you take your first drink? And they all got the answer right. It was '21. I said, but what's more important? When can you vote for the first time? They said 18. And I said, okay, on your 18th birthday, I want you all to be registering to vote. So I hope that I convey that how important it is. And I want to thank all of our citizens for voting in the March 8 primary and sharing your voice with what you want for our future in our country. I also found out, Mr. Corbett, you've been particularly interested in, I did my ancestry and found out unbeknownst to me that I have 3% Irish in my background.
There you go.
And so I will legally be celebrating this year. So I was very happy to hear that.
We claimed you anyway.
And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Soltis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things. First of all, there's an issue that came up that I wasn't too well aware of, because I don't smoke cigarettes. But there's a thing called e-cigarettes or vapor smoke or whatever you call it. And some of the things that I learned about it, that somebody shared with me, that it's not necessarily regulated like regular cigarettes. They're not approved by the FDA. It's not considered a safe alternative to any form of, you know, tobacco. I think it's, from what I read here, responsible marketing. E-cigarettes may be particularly attractive to youth because of their novelty. I guess they're sold in different areas, mall kiosks and gas stations, and they're available in certain flavors that appeal to the youth, like chocolate, strawberry, peach, and mango. You know, I think that does our kids a disservice. So certainly, there's currently no regulation at the federal or state level of prohibiting these e-cigarettes to minors. So I asked the city manager to look into it and come up with his suggestions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Can I just chime in on one point relating to that?
Yes, please.
There were a couple bills pending in Lansing relating to the vaporizers, the e-cigs that we're talking about. And we were waiting to see if the state was going to pass a bill. And there was some movement, and then it stopped. But once the request is, the request was sent over today from the city manager's office, we're going to take a look at it. But a point of information for council is that what kids are doing with these vaporizers is they're taking a certain type of marijuana in a wax ball and putting it in the vaporizer in order to eliminate certain ingredients to get a higher concentration of THC and to intensify the effect. And that's, that's what seems to be going on out there amongst a lot of the younger people who are using those devices. So it's something that does need to be addressed.
So yeah, I think it would be, I'm sorry, city manager?
No, just, your honor, just to add to that, at one point, the FDA was also considering regulation. And we were, we were kind of in a holding pattern with the state and federal government. But clearly, they haven't acted in a timely basis.
Yeah, so I see. Okay. So if we can jump on that, I think that'd be a responsible thing to do. And so in grad school, I came across a program called Crime Mapping. And, you know, check it out. It's really interesting. It has your, every area that the city has to sign up for, municipality has to sign up for, which we currently are going to look into doing. And so what it is, is there's a variety of different crimes that are committed, you know, burglary, arsony. And there's certain icons that'll show exactly where the location of the crime occurred. And it will go into a little more detail of, you know, exact location. And so we're, hopefully, we'll get that on the website and, you know, take a look at it. I think it's, you know, it's a form of transparency. I think it's a great thing, you know, just to see what's going on and compare to other cities as well. And happy St. Patty's Day when it comes up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Soltis. I concur with what Councilman Soltis is requesting, that, you know, we do some research to see what the lay of the land is and what our options are regarding that industry. That's, let's see. Oh, I do want to congratulate our new deputy chief in the police department, Tim Palowski, who's been with the department for many, many years, highly respected. And so it's nice, you know, we were lucky to promote our new chief, Corey Haynes. So now we're doing some backfilling up the ranks. And it's just, it's, it's great to live in a city where we have so many trusted officers who have done it all that we can trust in these new roles. So congratulations to Tim. And that's it. Thank you for joining us tonight. I'll adjourn the meeting. Good night.